Good evening, everybody, and welcome to, there we go, good evening, everybody, and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall for our annual community budget presentation. I am Councilman Mike Bonin, a member of the Budget and Finance Committee. I am joined this evening by my colleague, Councilman Bob Blumenfield, also a member of the committee, and we should be joined, I believe, in short order by our Chair, Mr. Paul Krikorian. Tonight, we are here, not to talk, but to listen. The members of the Budget and Finance Committee are eager to hear from you and various stakeholders in our communities about your priorities for services in the budget for the next fiscal year, for the 2015-2016 year. Next week, as most of you know, the mayor will announce his proposed budget, and then the week after, starting on April 28th, the Budget and Finance Committee will begin to hear that proposal, discuss it with the general managers of the city departments, and amend it to add or reduce services depending on the feedback we get from you and other stakeholders. As engaged residents and stakeholders, most of you already know, the city has faced tremendous difficulty in balancing its budget for the past several years. Residents have suffered from the fallout of the economic downturn of 2008. The city workforce, as many of you know, is now at the lowest level since Tom Bradley was our mayor. Through that difficulty, the city has worked tremendously hard to preserve critical services, most particularly those related to public safety, and has steadily restored cuts to other programs like recreation and parks, libraries and senior programs, and now finally is making headway at addressing our crumbling and decaying infrastructure. In the next year, we hope to continue that progress, and will add even more services, like the development of a comprehensive citywide sidewalk repair program for the first time in decades. The city still faces a deficit in the coming fiscal year. We still have challenges that need to be addressed, but we are a long way from where we were five years ago, when Mr. Krikorian first took office and took helm of this committee. Back then, the projection was that we could face a $1.1 billion deficit in this fiscal year. The city council over the past couple of years cut that deficit dramatically, saving the city more than $800 million. The council has managed to balance the budget each year, and has even built up the biggest reserves that the city has seen in decades, all that in partnership with Mayor Garcetti. This year, we plan to take another step forward toward our ultimate goal, which is to eliminate, eliminate, our structural deficit, so we can restore services to where they should and need to be. The goal of this committee, Mr. Krikorian, our Chair, and the rest of the members, along with the mayor and the rest of the council, is to continue our fiscally responsible and sustainable path, to make us the city we know we can and should be, and the city that every resident of Los Angeles deserves. We're going to start this meeting by hearing from one of the architects of the city's recovery and renewal, representative of the city administrative officer, and representing that office tonight is Mr. Ben Seha. Just so folks know the drill, Ben will make a presentation, then we'll have a brief presentation from our chief legislative analyst, and then we will take a public comment. Go ahead, Ben.
Good evening, members of the Budget and Finance Committee. My name is Ben Seha. I'm Assistant CAO here for the City of Los Angeles. We do have a PowerPoint in true CEO fashion that we like to go through. It's up on the screen, and we also have handouts for those members of the public that are here with us tonight. Just to provide some context, what we wanted to do is kind of set the stage with regard to the upcoming budget that the mayor will be presenting on April 20th, to remind people of the great strides we have made since 2007. And in the first slide, you see actual texts from rating that we received from Moody's Investment Services. They're one of the major rating agencies that rate our bond ratings. And in 2007, excuse me, in 2010, in the midst of the Great Recession, we were downgraded. What that means is that, based on their assessment, they felt that the city had really not budgeted well, had missed the mark with respect to revenues, and hadn't really put the effort to deal with the dramatic shift that occurred with the Great Recession. As noted there, they noted that the erosion of cities historically better than average willingness and ability to quickly rebalance the budget at mid-year was basically gone. And they noted that we had underestimated the full effect of the recession. Really, what happened is, we were in crisis mode during that time, which led to ultimately a reduction in the services that the public expects and deserves, and really, a lot of decisions that were made with just the intent of balancing for the next day. Based on that state, our office, led by Miguel Santana, decided to put together a framework that we could operate under over the next several years. We called it a three-year plan, and that three-year plan had five guiding principles. One was to adhere to responsible fiscal management, to focus on core services, to pursue alternative service delivery models, maintain a sustainable workforce, and strengthen revenues. So with that framework in place, we have actually made many strides. One is with regard to the revenues and improving economy since that time. We saw the largest, again, in 2010, we saw the largest reduction in revenues in the last 25 years, and now we're projecting a steady growth in that revenue. Usually, our outlook estimates a 3% growth in revenues, and what you see here is seven general fund taxes, our most economically sensitive revenues that we have that are derived from taxes, including the business tax, sales tax, property tax, documentary transfer tax, the transit occupancy tax, and the parking utilities tax. With the recovery in, you know, in full swing, we're actually projecting to see an uptick in these revenue sources going into the next fiscal year, perhaps even greater than 5%. Another way that we've been able to measure the success we've had with kind of moving from the crisis management that we endured with the Great Recession to a more strategic planning and decision-making based on results, have been the fact that when we go to the bond market now, again, the same rating agencies that downgraded us a while back, they are now looking at us with an improved sense of accomplishment and resolve to address our fiscal challenges. How that translates into actual savings for the city is shown in this chart, where the interest rates that we get charged for our revenue anticipation notes have been decreasing since, again, the midst of the Great Recession, where it's less than 11 basis points, in essence, of 1% that were being charged on our bond ratings for that year. What that means is that, over the last years, as shown in these charts, our savings to the general fund have been, in essence, in 2011, $27 million; in 2012, another 27; in 2013, $30 million; and in 2014, $37 million. So over those, the years noted in this chart, we've saved over $160 million by being able to go to the market, borrow money, pay our pension payments in July as opposed to throughout the year, and receive a discount for making that early payment. One of the things that our office does on an annual basis is prepare a fiscal outlook, and this chart shows the fiscal outlook we put together after the adopted budget for 2014-15. What we are showing here is a steady increase in revenue based on an assumed economic growth, again, following the midst of the Great Recession, but as well as continued increase in expenditures. But what we were showing was that during the term of this outlook, we would eventually achieve a surplus, as opposed to the constant deficits we battle every year. So going from a $166 million deficit that was projected for 2015-16, by the end of the term of this outlook, we would be at a surplus of about $23 million. And in essence, eliminate the structural deficit that we deal with, again, on an annual basis. So, I mean, this was only made possible by the efforts of the entire city family, the departments that had to deal with budget reductions, and of course, the public that had to deal with the services that were reduced, as opposed to deal with the decline in the Another measure of success that we like to show is an increase in our reserves, and it really is a measurement of success for the city. It's one of the best practices that are noted by the General, by the Government Finance Office, excuse me, the GFOA, I forget the acronym, but it's, I believe, stands for the Government Finance Office Association, Officers Association. As you can note from this chart, our reserves have been growing for the last several years. And in fact, in 2005-06, there was an establishment of a budget stabilization fund that, excuse me, in 2009-10, that was only funded at $500,000. Now that fund is at $64 million, and that, in essence, will be the fund that the city has to rely on for any future deterioration of revenues, as those that we experienced, again, during the Great Recession. What you also see here is an increase in our reserves for emergencies and for contingencies, emergencies whether they're natural or otherwise, contingencies that we deal with on an annual basis, whether it's to deal with litigation, other liabilities, things of that nature. We're in a much better place to deal with those unanticipated outcomes that may occur during the fiscal year. Our policy is to have a 5% reserve fund, and as you can see from this chart, we're exceeding that. Combined with the budget stabilization fund, in July 1st, 2014, at the start of the fiscal year, we were at 8.7%.
This is the point in the hearing when Mr. Krikorian would ask you to repeat what percentage the reserve fund is at?
And I would say 8.7%. In addition to the reserve fund policy, the city has many policies that in the past it has not been able to abide by. One of those was a capital investment policy. That policy calls for an investment of 1% of general funds for capital improvement projects. And as you can see, during the term of 2007-08 to 2012-13, we were not even close to meeting that policy. We were far below the 1% that's established. And it wasn't until 2013-14 that we started to exceed that once again, and expect to continue to exceed the 1% going into the future. Now, this is a policy where our investments in sidewalks, as noted by you, Mr. Bonin, Councilman Bonin, will help us make sure that we maintain this 1% policy going forward. What we also count here are investments in sidewalks and streets by the general fund, and in other capital projects, including the buildings, you know, building parks, building libraries, anything where the general fund actually is making a contribution towards Now, while we've made a lot of great strides with regard to addressing liabilities, we have many more that have been, that are pending, but we do want to make note of some of the major ones that we have either achieved a great deal of success or are in the process of closing out in the near future. The Willetts, City of Los Angeles case, was one related to sidewalks, where there was quite a deal of press a couple of weeks ago with regard to a settlement that's been reached, where the city will now be making an investment in sidewalks to deal with the American with Disabilities Act access for those disabled communities. We've also made some strides with employee-related litigation, such as the one that we were dealing with the city attorneys on a few years ago, and also with employee-related litigation that dealt with the Department of Water and Power and their pension system. We still have others looming out there, but we see some progress being made. The one noted here, Ardone versus City of Los Angeles, deals with our utility user tax, in particular, the one that is charged on our telephone user tax. It's been a long-going case dating back to 2005. We feel we're making quite a deal of progress here. It's one of the cases where, at one point, we had to disclose to the bond markets, again, and to the investors, that this case could have resulted in a $750 million judgment against the city. We believe we're far away from that now, based on the progress we have made, and we hope to have some type of settlement on this in the near future. And again, it's by being able to address these major litigation issues, these major liabilities, being able to come up with solutions for them, that really helps us, again, with our investors, with the bond market. With respect to staffing, it's obvious that the city is a lot leaner than it was a few years ago. There was an exodus of staff tied to the early retirement program that was offered by the city, again, when we were trying to deal with the crisis of the time. We're now, as noted earlier by the council, dealing with the staff workforce as small as it was under any mayor, going back to Tom Bradley, and that reflects a 14% reduction since the peak of 2007-08. Obviously, there's been a lot of pressure to bring up these numbers once again, and rightly so, there's a lot of services that have been diminished because of the decrease in staffing. But as we noted in our, you know, when I mentioned the fiscal, excuse me, the guiding principles or the pillars of our three-year plan, we have to do so with the focus on core services and with the focus on workforce sustainability. It's not enough just to add people back, we need to make sure that they're focused on the priorities that the council mayor is setting, and that they're going to be sustainable, it's going to be a sustainable workforce going into the future.
Important to note that that drastic reduction in staffing and resulting services has almost entirely been from the non-LAPD portion of the budget. The LAPD has stayed relatively, relatively steady.
That is correct, yes. The red portion of that graph is the police department, both sworn and civilian employees, but most, the majority of it being sworn, of course. Now, one of the other accomplishments we'd like to note is with regard to pensions. And this is a little bit hard to read, so I'll try to walk you through this chart. This chart shows two lines. One line is our prior projecting, with regard to the contributions we're going to have to be making to our pension systems, both to the sworn pension system and to our civilian pension system. And that's the light orange line, the higher line.
The upper one.
The upper one, exactly. So back in 2013-14, when we were putting together the budget for 2014-15, we received illustrations from our pension systems that demonstrated an increase in the contribution rates to their systems, but, you know, one that would stable off and begin a downward trend towards the later part of this chart, in 1819. Based on the new assumptions from the pension system, based on recent market returns dating, going back to last year, those contribution amounts have been reduced, to the point where if everything else was to stay stable, based on today, what we know today, our assumptions today, we would realize a significant number of savings based from our prior projections to our new projections. So for example, going into 2015-16, where we thought we were going to be spending about $1.1 billion in our pension systems, it's a little bit lower than that by about $35 million, and so on and so forth in that chart. So what we're trying to express here is that we are making strides as far as mitigating some of the increases that we thought we were going to be seeing in our pension systems. We continue to make what is required, our full required amount of payment, that unlike other jurisdictions where they may be taking a holiday with regard to making their pension payments, we are making the full payment that is required by the systems. And, you know, based on the market returns, obviously, and some of the reforms that we've enacted here in the city, we are hoping to continue this trend of, you know, having the contributions decrease by the end of this term of this, by the 1819. This is still on pensions. One of the things that folks like to comment on are the funded ratios for the systems, and what we're showing here is that while our funded ratios are below 80%, with the efforts we're making by the, you know, '21-'22, we expect those to, for lasers to be above 80%, slightly over 80%, and for our police pensions to be, you know, over 90%, which would be one of the stronger funded ratios in any part of the country for pension systems.
In any part of the country?
Yes, any pension system would, I think, strive to be at the funded ratios that we're showing, where we could potentially be at by the end of '21-'22. And unlike many other jurisdictions on pension systems, we, in essence, started a lot of the best practices that are being looked at now, and that's including funding our health, retiree health, as a, you know, kind of pay-as-you-go, as opposed to what was done before, and also now asking employees to contribute towards the retiree health So along with our labor partners, you know, a lot of the strides we've made with controlling costs for pensions and employees have been, as I noted, dealt with pension reforms for future hires. We now have two tiers for our civilian and for civilian members. Anybody hired, I think, since the last couple of years is now part of tier two, which is, provides for a lower retirement amount. We've initiated looking at lowering the starting salary for some classifications. Like, as I mentioned before, we're asking employees to contribute towards healthcare premiums, and also towards retiree healthcare. And we're trying to control compensation by limiting the cost of living increases that have, in the past, resulted in a much higher employee cost for us. But we, you know, we can't do this on our own, it requires partnership with labor, and that's an important piece to it. So just to bookend the last bit of the Moody's downgrade, in 2014, we were actually upgraded by Moody's, based on the strides we've made, accomplishments that I just went through. Moody's noted our strong financial management, the fact that we had curtailed expense growth, including significant pension costs, the fact that we are prudently positioning ourselves to grow our reserves, and that our reserves for the four-year budget outlook that we showed, you know, showed them growing and our deficits declining. So just, you know, this is just a way to illustrate how we've gone from crisis management to more of a, you know, strategic planning in our city. But of course, we're not done. Employee costs continue to grow, and there's, as I mentioned earlier, pressure on restoring services, and there's always new litigation, and one in particular, or a couple of cases that are new to us that we must deal with include the power transfer, which is a significant source of revenue for the city. With regard to employee costs, again, while we're making strides with regard to mitigating the growth, the employee costs continue to be a very high percent of our, of our dedicated cost to, of our budget, rather. What this shows is the general fund budget in each bar for that year, and basically, how much we're spending towards employee costs, which are in blue, and how much is every other expense, which is in red. So as you can see, in 2014-15, for example, 77% of the general fund was dedicated towards employee costs, and by employee costs, I mean salaries, healthcare, benefits, and pension contributions for those employees.
The horizontal purple line reflects what percentage of the general fund that year was for employee costs, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so for, and for example, as I mentioned, for 2014-15, it's 77%, in 2005-06, it was 75%. So it's kind of, you know, stayed around those percentages points, going up and down a few percentages, but, which is, you know, one of the ways we've been able to, this in essence, shows the fact that we've been able to start mitigating some of those employee cost growth, where it was starting to peak in 2012-13, now it's hopefully coming down, and that's hopefully the new trend.
Is that related to their standard from other cities? How would you compare that to other cities?
That's a quick question. I don't think we've been able to fully do that analysis at this point. You know, this is, you know, it's something that we could definitely look into for future reference.
Do you have a breakdown of that from sworn versus non-sworn?
We do have some more detail that breaks up, it's not included in, actually, I think we have a chart that speaks to that a little bit later on in the presentation.
Because my recollection is that it's significantly higher in sworn, which would make me think it would be significantly lower in the non-sworn.
Yeah, we have a chart that hopefully will shed some light on that. So what this shows here is the average cost per employee, again, it's combined for, it doesn't break out between sworn or civilian, it's just all of them together, the average cost. And what this is comparing is that growth against the CPI change for the same period here. So while CPI has been around, you know, anywhere from a high of 4.3 to a low of, actually, negative 0.8, the increases in employee, per employee costs have mostly been above 4%, if not higher in some years.
If that slide was meant to be baffling, it was successful.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I mean, basically, there's three points here, that despite reduction in the workforce, the budget, the budget has risen because employee costs have risen. The average cost for employee across all classification of funds has gone up $50,000 since 2005-06, or over 50%. since 2005, 2006, or, or over 50%. And at the, at the cost increase, basically, going back to the peak employment, if, if we were to have continued that peak employment that where we stated, we would have had 700, I'm sorry. The bottom line is that if you go back to 2005, 2006, the average cost per employee was about $100,000, and now it's $152,000 per employee.
In the CPI, you're trying to compare apples to apples in terms of the present value of, or, you know, the value of a $2,005 versus the value of a $2,014. But we have to kind of do that in our head to compare the green line and factor it in with the, with the blue bar, right? Is there, is there, is there somewhere where that's done for us, where we're able to see the cost per employee as adjusted for inflation on the, you know, on a per-year basis? Is, is $152,000 the equivalent of $100,000 back in '05, or is it substantially more, I would imagine?
It's, it's more. We don't have that calculation on here, but again, it could be something that we, we provide with you at a, at a later date. But it's, I, I think what we're trying to show here is that the, the average cost per employee has, has gone up a little bit more than, than CPI. But we could provide you with those calculations at a later time. And to, to answer the question you mentioned earlier about the difference between the sworn and civilian positions, we offer this table. So, what you see here is, again, comparing sworn salaries in 2005, '06 versus sworn salaries in 2014, '15. The average cost per employee at, in 2005, '16 for sworn was, sworn salaries is 90, about $92,000, whereas now it's $110,000. You see the increase in their pensions, and then you have the same for the civilian and, and civilian pensions. So, and all, what we're saying here is that over $1 billion has been added to employee
There's such a dramatic difference between the, the jump in pensions, which is almost doubling, or more than doubling-
Yes.
-and versus the jump in salary.
Yes.
Do you think they would track a little bit more?
Well, what you have to remember is that with pensions, a lot of it is based on the, the assumptions that are being made by the systems, or, you know, any, any change in policy that the systems make. And it's also a reflection of the investment returns that the systems are receiving. So, during this time, what is noted here are the different assumption changes that, that were made with regard to the return, the returns. So, in '05, '06, I think we were still projecting 8%, if not greater, amounts in, in returns versus now, which is now at a seven, I think in 2014, '15, we were still using a seven and a half. So, that, that did result in the higher contribution amounts per, per employee, in essence, during that time. So, there are various assumption changes that were done during that time that resulted in higher, higher contribution rates per employee.
And that assumption rate was partially set not just by our decision, but that was, there was some statutes about that, then?
Well, it's, it's really based on, on what they're seeing actually occur in the market. You know, when, back in 2005, '06, the 8% returns were, were really kind of the norm that most of the systems across the country were using. I think now you would be hard-pressed to find anybody at 8%, especially given the downturns that we've, we've seen in, in the market in between 2008, 2010. That created a lot of pressure for systems to start using a, a much lower return on investment. We have now, and our systems have adopted a seven and a quarter percent return for 15, '16. And, you know, have also made other adoption of policies to, to better protect the assets in the systems from, from any dramatic events as we experienced in 2000, between 2008 and And if you thought that other chart was confusing, this might be a little bit too, so let me explain what's going on here. So, one, as, as I noted earlier, one of the charts that we, we typically share with, with the public and, and with you through our various reports, including our financial studies report, is our four-year outlook. And we, in essence, make revisions to that four-year outlook twice a year. Once, when the mayor submits his proposed budget, and then the second time, maybe a month afterwards, when the council adopts the budget, makes changes and adopts the budget. So, what this shows is the cumulative deficits in those forecasts going back to 2010, '11. So, let me start off with the first bar. In 2010, '11, we had a forecast, and the, the cumulative deficits of, of the four years from that forecast were about $1.5 billion. So, for those four years that were shown in that outlook, our deficit, you know, added up over those four years to $1.5 billion. The next year, when we presented the forecast, the cumulative deficits for those four years was reduced to somewhere around $1.1 billion. So, we're making progress with respect to, to addressing our structural deficit. The following year, in 2012, '13, our four-year outlook showed a cumulative deficit of just over $1 billion. And then the, the biggest jump as far as addressing our structural deficit occurred in 13, '14, when, thanks to the recovery that we started experiencing, thanks to the reforms that were established, both for the pension systems, the, the changes that we were trying to make and were achieving with some of our, our labor partners, and healthcare reform, as well as, you know, contributions towards healthcare by, by our employees, we, we started making significant strides with regards to those, that structural deficit and cumulative deficit, to the, to the point where we're just looking at something over $350 million. And now, it's, it's still around, in the order of magnitude, I would say, around the same area, slightly over $400 million. And, and now the challenge is going to be, obviously, to get that to zero over the next several years.
That 400 million, does that assume or not assume ratification of the police contract?
This was based on the forecasts that we released in, along with the budget for 14, '15, so it did not assume either the ratification of the police contract or any cost of living increases for any open contracts that we currently have.
Does it assume ratification, or does it include ratification of the UFLAC contract?
It did not include ratification of the UFLAC contract either.
So, that's now no longer a very useful number?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's useful to the, to the point of when we come up, when the mayor presents the budget, you'll ha, that's going to be kind of where we were for 14, '15, and when the mayor presents his budget, we'll have a new, a new bar that shows kind of the new four-year outlook number. So, it's, it's, you know, we'll have a number, and, and obviously, the, our efforts are going to be to reduce, reduce that amount as much as we can. But it's, it's a challenge, obviously. You know, one of the questions that we've been asked in, in the budget finance setting and in other settings is, you know, is there a way to debt finance equipment? Is there a way to debt finance some of those kind of needed expenditures that we have to make? And yes, there is a way to do so, but what happens is, based on our capacity for debt, it, it takes away from, from the, kind of the true nature of what, of what using those financing tools are for, and that's, you know, what we call real property, or, you know, actual building of buildings, building of bridges, building of streets, things of that nature. So, what we show here is, is, is the fact that we've, we've kind of gotten away from that policy of using our debt tools for real, real capital projects, and have been, you know, really using it for, for equipment, which is, which is still fine. There's definitely a need to, to purchase equipment, especially if they meet the, the requirements of, of having a useful life of six to 10 years, of, of being costing over $250,000 per apparatus, for example. So, we're not saying that it's, it's not right to use our, our debt to purchase these, these equipments, these sturdy equipments like fire apparatus or helicopters. What we're just trying to say is that we need to go back to using that for, for like real capital projects, whether they're community centers, neighborhood, neighborhood city halls, things of that nature, you know, making repairs to our buildings, like, things that have a useful life of, you know, decades, really, so that we can amortize the costs over that, that same term. And again, as you can see, because we were cash-strapped during the, during, you know, right after the Great Recession, we really were using it for capital project, I mean, excuse me, for capital equipment almost exclusively. And, and what we're trying to do is, is maybe get on a pay-as-you-go for capital equipment as much as we can, and, and use our debt for our financing tools for real property. You know, that is something that, kind of a goal that we're going to set for ourselves and, and do our best to, to try to get to.
Although, in those years, the two years where we were using it just for equipment, those were our lowest years of, of, of debt.
That's, that's right, and it's tied, again, to the, to the downgrade of our ratings that we received. It wasn't the best time for us to go to the market with, with those ratings at that. Yet another confusing chart here, so let me explain what's going on here. One of the things that, that the public has probably heard is, is our increasing liability with regard to police overtime. Again, one of the, one of the major crisis, you know, ways that we were trying to mitigate the crisis was by using less cash for stuff. And you saw that with the equipment, we were using less cash for equipment, and we also decided to use less cash for actually overtime. So, what happened? Well, the banks for police overtime dramatically increased. And what, you know, our pay-as-you-go for overtime, you know, dramatically decreased. One, we're, we're about to reverse that. As you know, the, the PPL agreement calls for a specific number to be budgeted for, for cash overtime, which we will definitely be including in the, in the proposed budget. And it also calls to, for some initial down payments on that huge bank you see there, reflected by the, by the pink, real, you know, pink box, if you will. So, the intent is for that green line to, to become a little bit more steady around the, you know, above the $70 million mark, and eventually the, for that pink box to, to really, you know, evaporate, be, be dealt with, to the point where it's, it's no longer there. Because what happens is, is as, you know, people, our sworn officers may accrue overtime when they're, you know, at a police officer three level, but because we don't pay down that bank, we end up paying them when they're maybe detective twos at a higher rate, or, or lieutenants, or what have you. So, it's, it's prudent for us to start making some down payments on that, on that bank to overtime, and which we'll start to make.
How, how much do we have right now in the bank for unpaid?
I, I believe the value of that bank is about $100 million, if I'm not mistaken. At least it was at one point. So, it's, it's a, it's a really big liability that we've been called out by the, again, the rating agencies and, and others, rightly so. And it's one of the things that we, we are establishing our, our goals to really tackle over the next several fiscal years.
Do we have, do we have a sense of how much of that is for people who are soon to retire, when we'll have to pay it out?
No, I, I don't. It's, it's, I'm sure there's analysis that could be done with, with some, some proper personnel tools, but I don't have that information at this point.
It would be good for us to know how urgent a, a situation it is.
So, we, we definitely have some recommendations going forward as far as, you know, where we need to be, where, where we should be, we should be at. We're continuing to push a goal to have the reserve fund plus a budget stabilization fund be at at least 10% of the general fund, and we're close. As, as you saw in the chart, on July 1st, 2014, we were above 8%, while we've had to tap into the reserve fund this fiscal year to, to address some liabilities. We think we're still going to be in a strong position going into next fiscal year. As I mentioned earlier, it's prudent for us to resolve major litigation earlier than, than later, before the, the meter on the attorney fees keep, you know, keep, keep going up. And we're, you know, we're, the, the city attorney has, in partnership with the city attorney's office, they're making a, a great effort to, to really identify those major, major areas of litigation, exploring how we could move away from outside counsel that we may be using and going more for in-house counsel with folks that they have recently hired. And while it's, it's tough to, to kind of not want to back, it, it's tough not wanting to backfill, you know, cuts that we've endured from the federal government, but really, you know, it's going to be one of those tough challenges that this council's going to have to deal with, is priorit, either prioritizing those areas with a federal government cut above those things that we're doing now, or, or, or in essence, not, not backfilling those cuts. It's, it's another one of those priorities that, policy areas that the council's going to have to weigh in on, in particular with this upcoming budget.
It is, and you'll hear from some testimony from the public in, in short order about some of the federal programs that have been cut. And we clearly need to balance what you just said with the fact that we'll, we'll face both human costs and actual financial costs if we don't fill some of those holes. If, for instance, the, the funding for domestic violence safe houses isn't filled by us, we're going to face greater costs of, through homelessness and people living on the streets. So, I, I think we need to be thinking what the, the actual projected cost is and not just sort of the short term.
You're right, and, and we're not saying we, we shouldn't backfill, but we need to be mindful of, of where we backfill, and in particular, maybe focus on, on those areas where there are clear metrics that, that allow us to, to show where, where our dollars would be most effective. Just continuing on some of the recommendations we have here, we obviously need to revise our capital investment policy. While we are meeting the 1% general fund contribution, we probably need to be doing more than that, and we also need to start looking at other special fund sources as a way to, to help us make the investments we need to be making in our infrastructure, whether they're streets, whether they're sidewalks, whether they're buildings, parks, libraries, what have you. We need a, we need to really rethink our, our capital investment policy, and we, we started doing that already. We've initiated a, a survey of other cities to see how they, they, they manage this, how, what policies they have in place to examine best practices, and we hope to be coming with, with the report on that shortly. We need to continue to implement the recommendations in the 2014 FIRE Department deployment study by PA Consulting, and move towards a civilization, civilization plan and develop a new standards of coverage, and that, that work is ongoing. And I, I know that there's, you know, ongoing reports that are being made to the Public Safety Committee on this. We need to look, again, this was brought up in many, many different points in, over the last several years, is hire detention officers to staff jails so that police officers can return to the field, and really initiate a police workforce capacity study to expand these efforts throughout the department's operations. So, again, you know, putting the cops back on the street and away from the, the desk jobs that civilians should be doing. And, you know, continuing the efforts with information technology, building on the Strategic Advisors report, and looking at, at ways to also address the infrastructure deficiencies that we have in our IT system. You know, and we're almost, we're almost through these, all these slides, so just bear with me for a few more minutes. One of the things we kept hearing from the departments is, is, has been with regard to having a sustainable workforce. And that just doesn't apply to making sure we can pay for our workforce, but actually having the people with the skill sets that we need to continue our, our systems running, to continue our services. And what this shows is, is kind of a breakdown of two ways. Employees by, by what we would call the generations, different generations, going from the greatest generation baby movers to, all the way to millennials. And also employees by years of service. So, you know, with 25 years of service or more, they're eligible to, to retire, going all the way down to less than 10 years of service. So, long story short, in essence, we have about 28% of the city workforce eligible to retire or take an early retirement, and in three years, that number's going to be about 43%. So, there's definitely a need for succession planning that, that has to happen. So there's definitely a need for succession planning that has to happen right away. And we know that some departments have started an effort on this. In particular, I know I T A has put together some plans, some budget requests for, that's going to help them with succession planning going into the future. And we hope to be working with the Personnel Department to come up with something a little bit more strategic citywide. Couple bullet points I want to mention here, I'm sure to the delight of you, Councilmember Bonin, is that going into next fiscal year, we plan to eliminate managed hiring.
Ms. Henigan, you might want to text Mr. Coretts so he can share in the delight at that news.
I mean, really, we're at the point where it's about time the departments are held directly responsible for staying within their salary budgets, and so that would be our recommendation going into next fiscal year.
Will the recommendation include, I mean, we're going to lose well over 100 firefighters, like, really soon. I mean, our hiring crisis in the Fire Department is extreme, and part of it has been the Fire Department's process, and part of it has been personnel. Is part of what we're going to be looking at is better resources for the Personnel Department?
The mayor's office has, I think, made it pretty clear to everybody, it's no secret that it's one of their priorities, to making sure that the Fire Department has the resources it needs, and that includes fire hiring. So I fully expect that their budget will address fire hiring to the point where it needs to be.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we can't talk about our budget without making a pitch for strengthening our revenues. One of the big points we get, brownie points, if you will, we get from the rating agencies is that the city has a diverse, you know, revenue source. It doesn't just rely on property taxes, it doesn't just rely on sales tax, like maybe some smaller cities, but with the combination of multiple different taxes we have, that creates a really diverse pool of revenue that we can rely on and really help us, you know, through the ebbs and flows of the economy. Although, you know, property tax is the most significant number, source of revenues that we have for the general fund. You see the breakdown of the different taxes there, and you also see that we are, in fact, including, with the dissolution of their CRA, we have started to include those revenues as part of our general fund revenue. But again, it's the diversity of the revenue that gives us a lot of, kind of, kudos, if you will, with the rating agencies and with the investors at large. So that concludes the presentation I have. I want to walk into answering any of the questions you have at this point, otherwise I will, I guess, turn it over to my C L A colleague.
Mr. Blumenfield, do you have any other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was a very thorough presentation, almost all of the slides were understandable.
Okay.
And I love the news about the potential end to managed hiring.
Thank you.
Very good. We, next we're going to hear from Karen Calfine, from the Chief Legislative Analyst Office, and she's going to walk us through sort of what the process is going to be for budget approval this year.
That's right. Yeah, the schedule for the budget consideration for the council and for the mayor is actually dictated by the charter. So, beginning on April 20th, that's the charter deadline for the mayor to submit to the council his proposed budget for the coming fiscal year. So once that is released on April 20th, then about a week later, the city's Budget and Finance Committee conducts a series of hearings to hear from the mayor on the proposed budget from the C A O, and then also from department heads. Each department head is scheduled to be before this committee to answer any questions, respond to the budget, questions about the budget, and the C A O, the C L A, and the mayor's office are also present during those hearings. During that time, they'll respond to questions from the committee members, and then at the conclusion of the hearings, and based on the discussions, our office will make recommendations to the committee for consideration. Those would be modifications to the mayor's proposed budget. Generally speaking, the proposed budget stays largely intact, but there usually are policy issues that are considered and some changes that the committee wishes to make, and those are put together in the form of recommendations from our office, and then the committee makes the final decisions on what will be presented to the full council for their consideration. So the hearing process and the Budget and Finance Committee process is usually completed around the middle of May, May 12th is the target date this year, with committee hearings beginning on April 28th. And then following that, our office, with the assistance of the C A O, will present the, or prepare the Budget and Finance Committee Report, which is then presented to the full council. The plan this year is to have a hearing on the budget with the city council on May 20th, which is a Wednesday. No action would be taken on that day, that'll just be for purposes of public hearing. And then the following day, May 21st, will be a special meeting day for the council to consider the proposed budget, and that's the day where, you know, emotions are considered and there's a full discussion about the entire city budget. And then once the council completes that process, then our office, the C A O and the city attorney present the budget resolution. Adoption of the budget resolution is actually the council's action on the budget, and by charter, that has to be completed by June 1st. So, and that's the last day. If the council does not adopt a budget by, a budget by June 1st, then what the mayor has proposed would go into effect. So, since May 1st, or, excuse me, since June 1st this year is on a Monday, the last day for the council to act is the Friday before, but we usually don't, we usually try not to run it to the very end, so probably by the middle of that week, prior to June 1st, the budget resolution will have been adopted. And then it goes to the mayor, the mayor has line item veto, has five days to respond, and then once, if the mayor does not veto, then that budget goes into effect. Or if he signs, then it goes into effect, and if there is a veto, that comes back to the council. The council has a prescribed timeframe for taking up the veto, and then by early June, we have a budget, and then that goes into effect on July 1st, which is the beginning of the fiscal year.
And when do staff from the C L A and C A O get to sleep again?
Usually sometime in June.
Great, thanks for the summary. Any questions, Mr. Blumenfield? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll now move to public comments. Madam Clerk, do I have cards additional to these here? All right, so if anybody would like to submit a public comment card, please do so to the clerk, and we will do a public comment of two minutes each. The first speaker is Eve Shidi, to be followed by Carol Tanto and Ben Shermer. Sure, it's late.
We sort of ordered these, so it'd make it easier. My name is Ben Shermer, Executive Director for Rainbow Services. We're domestic violence shelter operations down in the Harbor area. I want to thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for acknowledging that the decision to not backfill some of this funding has long-term repercussions. As you know, back on March 27, city council voted to approve C L A's recommendation of 1.1 million in C D B G funding for the domestic violence shelter-based operations. That represents a 50% cut to our funding. A 50% cut to our funding would result in approximately 25,000 bed nights in shelters being lost, which equates to about 850 to 1,000 domestic violence victims that would not get shelter. We're already at capacity, we're already turning people away. This would really be cataclysmic to domestic violence victims. The long-term repercussions, you touched on one, which is homelessness, but the other potential repercussion is homicides. If domestic violence victims don't have someplace to go, there's definitely going to be an increase in both homelessness and homicides. So really, at this point, we know that you are aware of all of this. We are just asking that this committee make funding for domestic violence shelter operations a priority as we move through this long-drawn-out budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
Good evening, I'm Carol Tanto, I'm from Sojourn Services for Better Women and Their Children. And last September, Chief Becken and Mike Fuhr held a press conference about the dramatic increase in calls for domestic violence services to Los Angeles Police Department. And in January, the mayor and the chief called attention to the fact that they want to work on prevention and reducing domestic violence in Los Angeles. They're moving forward with establishing DART teams in all 21 L A P D divisions, but what will happen if shelter funding is not restored? There will be no one to answer the phone. We are very thinly staffed. Typically, a hotline is answered by the staff member who's in that shelter that night. So this is a public safety issue, it's not a social services issue. As Councilwoman Bonin noted, domestic violence shelters are really safe houses, they are not just shelters. So please, I ask that you keep in mind that this is a public safety issue for the city of Los Angeles. We want to make our city a safe place for everyone. If we don't get the funding restored, we fail.
Thank you. Next I had Eve, Megan Ortiz, and Daniel Healy.
Well, I was supposed to be last, so we're going out of order, so consider everyone having spoken. But, again, we're sort of preaching to the choir here, but you started the meeting by talking about the city's infrastructure. The domestic violence shelters are the city's public safety infrastructure. If the funding is cut by 50%, it will crumble. If it crumbles, we lose DART, we lose support for L A P D, we lose support for the city attorney's office, and we lose, most importantly, support for the public safety of the community. So, we're not, you know, talking, we're not just saying this, that we've figured out the numbers, we've presented them to you, and we need the funding, or everyone will suffer. So, my closing line would have been, had everybody on, we send the cars out, all city cars have a bumper sticker that say there's no excuse for domestic violence. As far as council and hopefully this committee, there's really no excuse for not funding domestic violence. So thank you for your support, and...
Thank you, Eve. I should note Eve is the Chair of our Domestic Violence Task Force. Next is Megan, and then Daniel, followed by Jessie Needham.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for hearing me today. My name's Megan Ortiz, and I'm the Executive Director of IDEPSCA, the Institute for Popular Education of Southern California. We run four out of the seven day labor sites across Los Angeles. And just to echo what you said earlier, Councilmember Bonin, making sure that Los Angeles is a city that all of its residents deserve means making sure that its most vulnerable workers retain their seven day labor sites, so that they have dignified and safe spaces to seek employment, learn worker health and safety skills. And as Josué, a day laborer in Harbor City, the oldest day labor site since 1989, funded thankfully, thanks to the city of L.A., he reminded me this morning that funding this day labor site also means that he can take care of his family. So the human cost of not funding these seven day labor sites goes beyond Josué, his wife, his child. It extends to his block, his neighborhood, and the entire city. Just thinking of the downtown community job site, most of those workers are vulnerable workers that are especially facing issues of homelessness. Not retaining funding for that site specifically means that many of these workers would be in the street, not just in the evenings, but also during the day. So this is a public safety issue as well. We understand that with the Department of Housing and Urban Development's Community Development Block Grant Program losing funding, that you replacing those federal dollars is a difficult decision. But we know that if the day labor centers are not funded, there will be catastrophic consequences across Los Angeles. Because not only will the city lose the benefit of leveraged resources, the absence of these centers is also going to create a vacuum that may result in unnecessary conflict. That's why we urge you today, and as the budget process continues, to maintain funding for all seven day labor sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessie Needham, followed by Mike Russo, followed by, I believe it's Perielle Stanfield?
Mike will go first.
Hi, this is Daniel Healy. Good evening, council members and staff. I'm here on behalf of the Boyle Heights for Youth Campaign. Boyle Heights for Youth is a campaign made up of youth and adult residents and representatives of community organizations in Boyle Heights who believe our young people are our future and can be our city's best asset if we invest in them. We're asking you, our city leaders, to increase investment in youth development, to fully prepare our youth for college and careers, and help them reach their full potential. Many youth in our city do not have the support and opportunities they need to thrive. When positive activities, services, mentors, and jobs are not available to youth, they're at risk for joining gangs, committing crimes, experiencing health problems, getting pushed out of school, going to jail, and even getting killed. We currently spend 43%, approximately $1.3 billion, of our general fund allocated for city departments on L A P D, which is more than any other department. We can continue to spend a large portion of tax dollars on strategies that lead to higher youth arrests and incarceration rates, or we can start using some of those resources to address the root of the problem, before youth go down the wrong road in the first place. While law enforcement serves a critical role, it cannot be our only strategy to address public safety in our communities. As a city, we need to invest in the support infrastructure for our youth if we want to raise our youth to be healthy, contributing participants in our communities, and break the cycle of crime and violence. We are asking that you redirect 1% of public safety dollars towards youth development in the form of supporting youth centers, creating jobs for youth and community peace builders. Consider creating a Department of Youth Development to show the city wants to make this a priority. We also encourage you to engage our youth and youth from communities across Los Angeles to get their input on decisions that impact them, particularly budget decisions.
Thank you, sir. And for the record, what was your name again?
Daniel Healy. You called my name earlier.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I am pleased to turn the meeting over now to our Chair, Mr. Paul Krikorian. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin, thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, and my apologies to everyone, we just concluded an E E R C meeting, so I'm pleased to be able to be here and continue with the public comment. Has Mike Russo been called? Mike Russo and Jessie Needham? Good afternoon.
Hi, thanks very much. My name is Mike Russo, I'm with the Advancement Project. Advancement Project is a next-generation civil rights organization dedicated to ending racial inequities and supporting the communities that are most impacted by economic and racial injustice. I manage our Equity and Public Funds Program, which aims to get communities' leaders' voices heard in the budget debates that matter to them, and make sure that public spending is a tool to remedy inequities so that the greatest resources and investments are directed to the greatest need. You know, we just heard testimony that thankfully, looking forward, we're in a place where we can start thinking about reinvestment rather than just weathering the storms of the recession that we've seen so recently, and to help guide that and make sure that we're using these opportunities to reduce the racial inequities that do impact our city, I wanted to offer two general recommendations. First, just that reinvestment along the lines of what we had before would not be enough. Just going back to 2008 with the number of dollars being spent and the places they were going to was clearly not enough to remedy some of those challenges we're dealing with. So we would urge the city council to look at spending through an equity-based lens, which would include analyzing where money is going in terms of neighborhoods and communities, and what impact it's actually having. And second, while public hearings like this are great, I would urge you to go even further to make sure that the community are real partners in these budget decisions. From Daniel Healy, you just heard about the work that the Boyle Heights for Youth folks are doing. Just to highlight one piece of what they're working to do is to create a youth council that would regularly meet with city officials and have youth actually bring their recommendations and have a voice in how youth development dollars are being spent in that community, and actually also pushing to have that youth council have a pot of money they could spend on youth development through a participatory budgeting process in partnership with that community. community. We think those kinds of models are great things that can really help end some of these inequities, and we look forward to working to make sure the FY16 budget starts to address some of those challenges. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jessie Needham, followed by Perielle Stanfield.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jessie. I work at the Center for the Pacific Asian Family. We're one of several domestic violence organizations that are here tonight. We have offices in CD 5, CD 10, and CD 15. And as my colleagues mentioned, we are facing a lot of cuts this year, so I wanted to just put a face on the issue and tell you the story of Alicia, the mother of a two-year-old son named Alex, who came to our programs. When Alicia was first married three years ago, her husband hit her in a fight. At the time, he said he'd change, he'd get over it, but of course, the violence intensified as it often does. And he would hit her, he would sometimes strangle her. He refused to let her get a job, he refused to let her get a driver's license. And even though she wanted to make that marriage work, she was reluctant to leave. She didn't have a lot of money of her own to start a new life. One day last summer, she called 911 fearing for her life because the escalated violence had gotten to the point where it was too much. He spent the night in jail, she spent the night in a motel, thanks to the support of the DART services, and she was exhausted. She had no idea what to do. Because her first language is Mandarin Chinese, she was hooked up to our hotline, and we arranged transportation for Alicia to our shelter, where she was able to start thinking about her next steps and begin healing from the violence. She got free legal resources, she filed a restraining order, she started her divorce paperwork. We helped her enroll in CalWorks so that she could start classes to earn her license as a pharmacy tech. And basically, we helped her start beginning to plan a safer, healthier home for herself and her child. She's one of thousands of survivors who call the Hotlines of LA City every day, not every day, every year. And I just want to make sure that these services are in place so that Angelenos of all areas who are living in abusive homes will no longer have no place to go. They'll always have a place to go, they'll always have someone to call. As members of the Budget Committee, you have the power to help survivors choose a life free from violence by ensuring that the budget ensures comprehensive, supportive services, including shelter services for survivors of violence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Perielle Stanfield, followed by Veronica Federovski.
Hello. I'm Perielle Stanfield. I'm here to be a squeaky wheel for the Animal Services Department. I want to make sure that they are a priority in the budget, and I also want to make sure that the money from the budget is spent efficiently and not on bureaucrats, but on services for the public that are very much needed. We're one of the largest cities in the U.S. I think we're the second-largest city. We have a huge population, and we also have a huge animal population here, and we love our animals in this city. We only have one supervisor and one field officer for each of the city shelters. We have six city shelters, and one supervisor and one field officer covers the entire area. It's not even one per district. We need more field officers, and we also need animal care technicians. We need more of them. We need more registered vet technicians in the shelters. We need people on the front lines, not bureaucrats. We don't need any more bureaucrats in the Animal Services Department. We need people that are doing the actual work of caring for the animals and answering calls in the field. There are many calls that do not get answered because there's just not enough personnel. There's stray animals in the street, there are animals being neglected, there's backyard breeding, and we need the manpower to take care of these issues. Also, the website, not the website, but the, yes, the website, but also the system that they use, the chameleon system, needs to be upgraded, and they need better servers. The Animal Services General Manager has proposed changing the whole system. It's better to be less, it'll be more cost-effective to just upgrade the system that they already have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Our next speaker is Veronica Federovski, followed by Daisy Miranda.
Hi. My name is Veronica. I'm working with the National Day Labor Organizing Network. I'm the West Coast Coordinator. My organization is a national network of organizations, 47 organizations that work for day labor and domestic worker rights. And I'm here to express our strong support of the city, of the Los Angeles Day Labor Program and to urge you to maintain the existing funding. Like you, we recognize the immigrant day laborers that integral part of our community, and we know that community worker centers provide great services to benefit to the entire city. So thanks to your leadership in the city council, the Day Labor Program has continued to be a successful model replicated throughout the country to resolve conflict and strengthen communities. I can tell you, as the West Coast Coordinator, that we have people, cities, counties around the country, always calling us, calling and visiting the day labor centers in LA because they're replicating the models and because these models are really known. So it's really, really important to keep the funding of these centers. And the centers promote public safety, they offer jobs, training placement, they adopt vehicles to deliver services to really vulnerable populations, they prevent migrant labor exploitation, and they foster integration and promote civic engagement. Unfortunately, there has been a study in 2004 that shows that half of the population of the day labor population gets exploited by employers, and the worker centers provide a safer space for those workers and promote basic worker rights, which they don't have at the corners. Also, now with, okay, I don't have any...
Go ahead and finish the thought. Go ahead and finish the thought.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Now with the Obama Executive Action, the worker centers, we provide for space where the applying immigrants who qualify for these executive actions could go through the whole process in a safe manner without being worried of being, like, still in, well...
Okay.
So these are really, really safe places for immigrants, and it's really, really important for you to support these workers and us for these workers.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Daisy Miranda, followed by Dr. Molly Rhodes.
Good afternoon. My name is Daisy Miranda, and I'm the Coordinator for the Careson Day Labor Center off of Wilshire and Union. And I'm here to ask that all seven day labor centers operated by IDEPSCA, Careson, and YPI are kept in mind in regards to funding. Our day labor programs provide public safety, offer job training and placement and much-needed services to the most vulnerable immigrant populations. We also serve as integration centers and promote civic engagement. And as Veronica mentioned, right, with the DACA and DAPA, where the community is going to come is going to come to the day labor centers. Why? Because we've been there for years. This is the population that we address, and it's where they feel comfortable, right? It's their neighborhood day labor center. So that would be something important to keep in mind. Also, when we talk about civic engagement, day laborers across the city of LA have taken a huge role in the Raise the Wage campaign, right? We're talking about $15 minimum for employees of the city of LA, and we know that that's not going to be possible for day laborers if there is no enforcement mechanism such as the day labor centers advocating for their rights. And so I know that there's complications with CDBG money, and I know that we're asking to be funded through city funds, but at the end of the day, when we look at a bigger picture, funding these seven day labor centers is going to save excess money that the city of LA is going to have to probably spend on public safety issues that will arise if there's no staff at these hiring sites to serve as mediators. So I know that the city of LA has always taken pride in being inclusive of immigrants and advocating for their rights, and I feel that this is the moment to really put your, you know, what you say into action by protecting these seven day labor centers. We're protecting the most vulnerable immigrant workers in the city of LA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dr. Molly Rhodes, followed by Dr. Daniel Weisman.
Hello, council members. I'm going to be quick. You all are very familiar with the priorities of the Coalition of LA Union's service restoration and good jobs for Angelenos. I wanted to ask a wonk question for Ben about the employee cost modeling. I'm wondering if, I'm assuming those are budget numbers and not actuals, and I'm wondering if part-time employees have been modeled in the cost universe, because, you know, the as needed's are not included in account in the budget. So I'm just wondering if those workers are included in the average amount, because that would obviously lower costs if they're not.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll ask Mr. Sayha to discuss that with you separately. Our next speaker is Dr. Daniel Weisman, followed by Michelle of the Youth Justice Coalition. Dr. Weisman, welcome.
Thank you, sir. You know, I take every chance I can to talk to you, and this is another one. I'm surprised that there are only 20 people in the back of me here. You opened this up and introduced this meeting as a place for the public to tell their priorities. Now, you must have looked at Section 10 and Section 9 of the Charter. That's one of the two specific chartered responsibilities of the neighborhood council people. And as a longtime neighborhood council person, I hope you'll hear a lot more from many of us, and I'm sure you will. The PowerPoints that you've just been reviewing from the CAO's office starts with what I think is probably the most misleading graph I've ever seen the CAO produce. If we want to talk about how we're doing this year, we do not want to look at seven, even though they are the biggest seven income sources that the city has. We want to look at all of them. I think if I could characterize what I've seen here today, I think it's same old, same old. The people in back of me have come because of specific and very good interest in their various proposals, and they should. There is no part of this budget that is unimportant. They're all important. We've preserved the police department in numbers, but we haven't preserved our fire department. We've let our infrastructure go to pot, and we have billions and billions of dollars worth of infrastructure that need to be repaired. As far as the fire department, Mr. Bonin, that's the number-one department in my book, too, because I've been with and known about their paramed program for years. They don't get a chance to even bill for what they do. And I've already had the opportunity to go over this with Mr. Blumenfield's staff. I look forward to having a meeting with you about it because of your interest in the fire department and, of course, with Mr. Krikorian as well very soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Weisman. And as of right now, the last card that I have is Michelle of the Youth Justice Coalition. Welcome, Michelle.
Good evening, Finance Committee. My name is Michelle Watson, and I'm here representing Youth Justice Coalition, but I'm also here as a concerned community member. And the reason I'm here today is because I would like to see Los Angeles changes budgeting practices and specifically by reinvesting in the future of LA, specifically the youth. The 2013-2014 police expenses were $1,310,824,300. Over half a billion of that money was spent on patrol of cities, some of those cities that I live in. And not even half of this amount was spent on schools or community embitterment or other services that other people are here advocating for. And the new proposed expenses for the 2014-2015 police expenses are increasing. That's more than a $25 million increase. And that's also increasing money for patrol. And with civilians being killed on average of once a week in Los Angeles, I think that divesting from the police expenses is something that most people could agree on. And with the police stations receiving free military-grade weapons from the 1033 program, surely the city can afford to cut some expenses. The 1% campaign is really what our Los Angeles community needs. 1% from the police budget equaling $100 million. From $999,009, I mean, $100 million would go back to the community, and that could get our community 25,000 youth jobs, 500 peacebuilders, and 50 youth centers offering the care and services. A lot of people are here for today, the youth development, the job, the mental health services, the homeless prevention, and all these other services. So please, really consider the 1% campaign for our Los Angeles communities. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you to all the members of the public who've come down here today to offer their comments. Obviously, this is not the end of the public's participation in this process. We will have, starting two weeks from tomorrow, we'll have five days of extensive and detailed budget hearings on every department of the city. And on each of those days, the public will have another opportunity to come and speak during our hearings. And of course, you don't have to wait for the hearings. We're eager to hear from you. Each of us who are members of the committee are eager to hear from you directly as we consider the budget, the priorities that the city faces as we go into this next fiscal year. So I want to thank you all for your participation. I would urge you to continue that participation through the budget process, urge others as well, who you are engaged with and organizing with, to provide their input as well. It really does help make our job easier when we hear what the priorities of the public are. Mr. Bonin, Mr. Blumenfield, any comments to conclude? All right. Well, thank you again, all, thank you all very much for your participation. We look forward to hearing from you and seeing you again on April 28th, when the Budget and Finance Committee will begin its hearings in the city's budget. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.